Seven thirty.
I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, April 12, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. End via Zoom teleconference, which meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website. Prayer will be offered by City Clerk Sue Lovring, and Alderman Derek Tebow will lead us in the pledge of the flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, oh God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face out multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Quite delegating. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation in America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleese.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Camo.
Present.
Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Kathy.
Present.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Mosher.
I'm here.
You have fifteen in attendance.
Thank you. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchus and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thanks, Madam President. First, I wanted to mention a couple of the items that are on the agenda tonight for action. The teachers' contract comes up pretty quickly. I wanted to say and thank the Budget Committee for their unanimous endorsement of this proposed contract. It accomplishes a number of things for the city, given that education is... Offering an excellent education for every child is vital to us. For that, we need excellent teachers, which we have, but to attract and retain teachers, we need to have competitive pay. Right now, the teachers are, in terms of average pay, Nashua is seventy-seventh of about a hundred and fifty districts in New Hampshire. This will provide the teachers with a raise and help to equalize starting salaries, salaries for those at the end of their career, and more than anything else, more than even the two ends, are the middle-level teachers, because Nashua is losing teachers who are trained, seasoned here in Nashua, to districts close by that pay higher for those trained teachers. So I hope you will follow the recommendation of the Budget Committee and endorse this very important step forward in terms of education here in Nashua. One thing that is important is the city sought a change in the HMO plan, which is offered city employees. As you know, we've gotten that agreement from a number of other employee groups. The teachers agreed to that plan, and as part of that, as a result of that, the projection of our healthcare experts is that we will save $2.3 million in healthcare costs per year, starting in year two of the contract, which begins next July 1. We are in an environment of rising healthcare costs, but this agreement means that for a period of about three years, we will have lower or constant city contributions for teacher healthcare. And before I conclude on that, I just wanted to thank the teachers for the extraordinary efforts that they have put in over the last two years during very difficult conditions, and just hope... We're glad we're back to normal now, and hope we can make sure that the kids do not suffer any lasting, long-term deficits as a result of the disruption. Another item on the agenda, which has received considerable discussion over a long period of time, is the outdoor dining, the extended outdoor dining. First, I mean, we have to congratulate and thank all of the people that served on the task force, consisting of the Infrastructure Committee, the Planning Committee, as well as our citizen members. The number of meetings, the length of those meetings, eleven o'clock at night, one o'clock in the morning, in my experience, is really extraordinary, and I think it shows how dedicated everyone, regardless of their opinion on this issue, how dedicated people are to trying to improve and support downtown Nashua. It is vital to the city, and I think all of the effort put in by everyone certainly is a recognition of that. At the beginning, we proposed a compromise from the configuration of the outdoor dining that occurred in the last two years, and the proposal scaled back the outdoor dining in order to improve traffic flow and reduce to about forty-some the net loss in parking spaces out of thirty-five hundred. The task force looked over these recommendations very carefully, block by block, and even finer than that, and adopted some changes, amendments, which are before you, and, of course, worked very hard in doing that. The one change that did come forward is that building owners have... In addition to the city, building owners have to agree to have the outdoor dining in front of their property. But I think everyone involved agrees that bringing more people downtown is something that we need to... Is an important objective, and outdoor dining clearly does that. Three to four thousand people a day was the count last year, brings a lot more life to downtown, many people commented on that. And if we think about the economic aspect, three or four thousand people over a number of months is many, many tens of, really hundreds of thousands of visitors, and if you think that every person spent $10, I mean, that's millions of extra revenue coming into our downtown. Some people have pointed out that we should come forward with a proposal to charge restaurants a reasonable fee for this, and I'm sure we can come up with that over the course of the next few months, and certainly I agree with that objective. But overall, I think the task force did a great job in making the recommendations they have, and I hope that you also endorse their recommendations. Madam President, one thing I wanted to touch on briefly is COVID, just because, of course, we're all concerned about that. The state has begun to de-emphasize some of these metrics that they've focused on over the course of the first two years, like the positivity rate, because there are many people who are testing way beyond... I mean, outside of the data collection by the state of New Hampshire, home tests, pharmacies, all that data is not collected, so they question whether the positivity rate really is a full or accurate report. So they want to focus on hospitalizations more than anything else. So on that score, we spoke with the hospitals Friday. As of that date, there were seven people hospitalized in Nashua, more than we want, but far, far less than some months ago. Those people all were being treated. Some had been in the hospital for other reasons and turned up with COVID. Those had been released, though, and the people they were talking about were being treated for COVID, but still, between the two hospitals, seven patients. Again, that is far better than it was some months ago. And finally, I wanted to congratulate and thank Alderman O'Brien for his work up at the legislature. As you know, the state did away with its own legal obligation to pay us, all cities and towns, forty percent of the pension cost for municipal employees. That was the... It was forty, then thirty-five percent. That is what persuaded cities and towns to join the pension fund. That was done away with by an action of the legislature a few years back, and that has cost the city so far, that broken promise, $74 million. So Alderman O'Brien proposed a bill to at least return part of that money, seven and a half percent rather than thirty-five. The obstacles to that were very considerable. A lot of opposition in the legislature, but there was a back and forth, back and forth, and finally, after two or so floor fights, Alderman O'Brien persuaded the House, the House, to pass his bill. That would mean $2 million to the city of Nashua. Now, still has to go through the Senate. Alderman O'Brien and others tell me that's a pretty tough road, but at least, for the first time ever, we got the bill through the House, and that was due to Alderman O'Brien and his efforts, so I wanted to thank him for that. And that is all I have, Madam President.
Thank you. Remarks? Response to remarks of the mayor? Start on this side. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President, and I want to echo the words of the mayor to Alderman O'Brien, or State Rep. O'Brien. I was... I had a front row seat just about to watch him do his magic, and he turned a "kill the bill" into a "pass the bill," and it wasn't easy, but he did it in his fashion, and I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Seeing no one else? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meeting of March 8, 2022, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Lisa M. Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from the Board of Aldermen relative to Resolution R. 2213, from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public, and from Tim Cummings, Economic Development Director, regarding updated plan based on task force recommendations.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Well, Adam Markou.
Here I am. Adam Markou, I live at Four Gilory Lane. I'm president of the Nashua Teachers Union. I have two children, one at South, one at Maidunstable, and one, two daycare payments away from kindergarten. I'm here to speak on behalf of the contract. This contract, as I mentioned to all of you that were here to listen to me last night, we started preparations for this contract in 2019, and then COVID hit and derailed everything as we tried to settle this contract prior to its expiration, which we have not had any of our contracts settled prior to expiration since 2011. This contract did a lot of things. We had a step schedule that was not sustainable. We moved a lot of people around to their correct places on that schedule last contract, which was expensive to do, and this time, we worked very hard to spread out and have equitable movement across that schedule, which makes it much easier to plan and budget when you're expecting the same kind of raises from step zero through step twenty-four. And step twenty-four will be the top at the end of this contract, which is a problem in itself that we'll have to address next time. I'm going to tell you, I was very concerned about whether or not this contract would pass the membership when we were given the healthcare proposal. It took a lot of education, a lot of time, a lot of understanding, help from Kim Kleiner's office, and getting this through the membership, and I'm happy to report that it passed our membership with a ninety-eight percent approval rating. Health insurance is scary when you make changes like we are, and you hear high deductibles, especially in our field where we have a lot of people who are families and have children and spouses, and it's a scary kind of thing, but I'm happy to say, the cooperation between the city, the union, and the district to educate our members on the health insurance changes has been phenomenal, and there's even a lot more interest in the high deductible health plan with Health Savings Account, because it's not so scary anymore when you hear a $4,000 deductible for a family. So I want to thank the Budget Committee for their unanimous support last night, and I would preemptively thank you for your support this evening, and look forward to signing that contract into effect tomorrow, so I'm hoping for those votes. So, thank you.
Fred Wardway?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Fred Wardway. Thank you for this moment.
Address, please.
I'm sorry?
Your address, too.
Twelve Mason Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight about the extended outdoor eating. Specifically, we're looking at the address of 133 Main Street, which is also known as San Francisco Kitchen. The task force, in the past, under unprecedented job of COVID and trying to work with the businesses and trying to remain them relevant during that time period, had an amazing breakthrough with the outdoor seating. At that time, they were allocated two spots in front of the restaurant. It's my understanding that, under this new ruling, there might be only down to one. San Francisco Kitchen is owned by a friend and a fellow veteran of mine, Ruben Gomez. He's served multiple tours in the Middle East and still serves with the United States Army Reserve Air Force, and can be deployed in the near future also. I hope you take this time to keep the downtown vibrant with the upcoming Performing Arts Center coming in. I think where everything is coming into the right downtown to bring it back, to keep it vibrant. I remember back in the days when Nashua was Money Magazine's number-one city in the year. I've been delivering mail for thirty-six years into downtown here with the postal service. I've seen it come, I've seen it changes throughout the time, but right now, we're in the right way, we're doing the right outlook, and I would hope that we continue to keep the downtown vibrant and keep bringing people down and bringing in the income. Thank you, and once again, please vote for two spots out in front of 133 Main Street. Thank you for your time, and have a good evening.
Lena Gomez?
Lena Gomez, 262 Lake Street. I am here for San Francisco Kitchen. This is like my third time speaking, and it doesn't get any better every time I'm up here. First of all, I just... You all know I'm in favor of the barriers. I wish we just had it again like I had it the first two years, but I know there has to be some modifications, some changes to it, so I just hope that I can keep two spaces in order to accommodate the same tables I've had the previous years, keep my employees, and be able to continue offering the community, serving the community like it has been. Second, I'm going to make it short. I do want to, like I said before in my emails, I want to thank each and every one of you. I know this is not an easy job. Dealing with happy and angry residents must be very hard on a daily basis, and I know you all have personal lives. Being here long hours doesn't make it any easier, so I do want to thank you all. And third, I want to welcome you to please visit, S.F.K., personally or at work meeting, but come by and have a nice dinner. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go to the Zoom. I'm going to call on Matthew Guthro.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Matthew Guthro, 104 Fond Lane. Good evening, Madam President, Mayor, Aldermen, and staff. I'm here to speak on the proposed legislation that would unfortunately create traffic gridlock, reduce parking, and a potential safety hazard in our historic downtown district. Also, our taxpayers can provide expanded outdoor dining for our restaurant community in downtown Nashua. I've watched and spoken at every one of the Board of Aldermen and joint task force meetings held on this subject, and I say I enjoy outdoor dining, and our expanded sidewalks on Main Street in downtown provide ample space for those activities, but to block off areas of Main Street is absolutely ridiculous. Not once during this process do we hear of an economicifiability study, a traffic study, a land use study for outdoor seating, or any kind of metric to support the need for this expenditure for one year, and certainly not three years. What we did see is that in 2021, there was a six percent utilization rate of expanded outdoor restaurant seating in downtown Nashua. Six percent to have those ugly, clunky barriers in place 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for months. Think of it this way: If you received only six percent of the vote in your ward or citywide, you probably wouldn't be sitting in this chamber right now. What we were provided was an unusual parking study, consistent of only two days in mid-October to justify moving over forty parking spaces from our downtown district during the height of our summer season. Our residents are not going to park and walk blocks to get their haircut, pick up prescriptions, visit the dentist, have their garments tailored, do their banking, or shop with other retailers. During the task force meetings, we heard that the legislation was going to turn downtown Nashua into a dining destination for out-of-counters and those out-of-state leave papers heading north, but we heard no plans on how we were going to promote downtown Nashua as a destination whatsoever. So ask yourself this question: What fuel is Tim Cummings using to drive our economic engine? Because so far, the proposed legislation in front of you essentially states the city Nashua's plan is to spend thousands of our tax dollars, is if we build it, they will come. That's not good enough for me and countless residents and business owners who have either spoken or written to this body overwhelmingly in opposition to this legislation. Ladies and gentlemen, you are tasked with the purse strings of this city. And in this case, I certainly hope you're making decisions on how to spend our tax dollars on data-driven initiatives and not dreams. I implore you to vote down the recommendations from the joint task force on this proposed legislation that's essentially nothing but a pie-in-the-sky economic boondoggle. Thank you.
I have Ken Boa.
Good evening. I would like to thank all the members of...
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Nineteen Woodbury Drive, Nashua.
Okay.
I would like to thank all of the members of the task force and teams and Aldermen and business owners that contributed all their hard working time to support this initiative. I really firmly believe, having been born and raised in Nashua for over seventy years, with numerous friends that thoroughly enjoy being downtown again for the last two or three years, to see filled storefronts, besides way beyond the dining experience, it's filled storefronts, people walking, chatting, being together, being vibrant, being active. I really feel this is a positive step for Nashua to get these barriers going and find a better way of barriers in the next three years, but obviously, we are about three to four weeks behind. Other cities are already opening their outside dining with great success, so I sincerely urge a very positive outcome. Thank you very much.
Next, I have Laura Colhoun.
Laura Colhoun, 30 Greenwood Drive. First, it is the job of the mayor to appoint three members to the Board of Registers, not two, as this board is currently doing tonight. Just because the mayor does not like the other political party, does not accept their applications, does not make this situation very democratic. I would ask the mayor forward the applications to the Board of Aldermen and have them review the applications. By doing this, Nashua could actually have fair elections. Secondly, a lot of Nashua residents do not want the barriers. However, the mayor and the restaurants and the bars want them, so Nashua will get them. The Nashua mayor keeps saying that the restaurant and bars downtown made millions, millions of dollars last year. The owner of Stella Blue is very vocal about wanting these barriers and how they have increased his profit. My idea is to let Stella Blue pay for the barriers. In doing this, the Nashua peasants would get a break, and I don't live in the North End or am I a member of the country club? Now, the Board of Aldermen want to make a Nashua arts and cultural plan. However, as a taxpayer, I'm saying no. With the current Performing Arts Center being shoved down the taxpayers' throat, I do not think any more money should be going to the arts. Last night, the Budget Committee voted to make a trust for Court Street. Bottom line is that the taxpayers will continue to foot all the expenses on this building plus, and all the while, are getting very little funds from the tenants in return. Alderman Kelly stated last night that right now, we, the Board of Aldermen, are putting our money where our values are. Well, Alderman, maybe you should start thinking about the values of the Nashua taxpayers, which is to put food on their tables, pay their mortgages, and pay their property taxes. This Board of Aldermen better start thinking about the taxpayers instead of special projects for downtown. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to back into the chamber. Karen Bill?
Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place. Please reject the recommendations made by the Joint Task Force and Downtown Infrastructure Committee for the following reasons. It is unfair to have taxpayers bear the burden for a third year for barriers that benefit a minority of businesses on Main Street. Residents have made it abundantly clear they want outside dining, but not at the expense of safety and reducing Main Street to two lanes. Keep four lanes open. Another committee has been formed to study the cost of the barriers. How ridiculous that this did not happen before making a recommendation of not charging anybody for the barriers. The barrier cost should have been tracked from day one and shared publicly with all citizens, certainly as a part of this process, but it was never divulged. Via a right-to-no request, I have ascertained the costs and cost per barrier and emailed them to everybody, all the Aldermen, earlier tonight. By the way, the cost of a barrier in 2020 was $617.57, one barrier. The cost per barrier in 2021 went up, and that was $688.45. And the second year doesn't include the cost of the barriers, which was in the first year. So together, cost for the barriers for the past two years, 218 barriers, one, now it's up two, having cost us $1,374.46. I have the spreadsheet, you have the spreadsheet. If anybody in the public wants a spreadsheet, you can email me. Outside dining has existed for the past twenty years, and there was never a call to arms from any restaurants indicating that the sidewalk amount that they had was inadequate. As many things go in life, it's a first-come, first-served basis. If, for any reason, there are any barriers installed in the downtown area for any business, they should pay per barrier and the return on investment in anywhere in the city. Say you need fifteen barriers at $700 per barrier, parking spots twenty by eight, that would encompass six parking spots, twelve barriers. Your cost as a restaurant, $10,500. Not bad when your return is $500,000 or $750,000. I did the math, and you have the numbers from the restaurants. These are all accurate, provided by John Griffin, by the way. Let's solve it right now and say no to the barriers, but yes to outside dining on the sidewalks at no additional cost to the restaurants. Have the moral courage to listen to the constituents, to vote no. It's not a done deal, and if you have so many concerns, send it back to committee, because the cost should have been discussed and analyzed, and I'm happy to provide them to all of you. Thank you.
Tim, Senate?
Thank you, Tim, Senate, 62 Underhill Street, Nashua. It feels strange to be not speaking about downtown first, but I'm actually here to speak in support of the teachers' contract. I, like many people in this room, have what I believe to be the ultimate stake in our public schools. I have a son in the public school system. I myself was also educated in Nashua schools, at least since the fourth grade. Since that time, because I was the cool nine-year-old who read the newspaper, I have seen contract season after contract season come up and play out very similarly to how we've seen this contract season play out, and the one before it, and the one before it. We need to start treating teachers like they are smart, like they're members of any other industry. People in any other industry, whether you're a teacher or you work in accounting like me, you look for a job where you're going to get the best bang for your buck. Nashua can't continue to kick it down the road in regard to teachers' contracts and expect... expect to retain the best teachers that we can offer our students. I personally want the best teachers that we can offer my students. I hope that anybody here with a student in the public schools would want the same for their kid as well. And since I'm at this lectern, and it would be remiss to not mention downtown, here we are, we have the proposal before us, we have spent many long nights in this chamber, many of you longer nights than I've spent in this chamber, because you've got more in it than I do right now. Let's go for it. It comes back to kicking things down the road. We've kicked things down the road in this city for far too long. We kicked the Performance Center down the road since I moved here in the early '90s. We've talked about projects that I've only seen to come to fruition in my adult life that were starting to formulate when I was a child. Please support the proposal from the task force and the recommendation from the committee. I hope to be dining downtown this summer outside. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I have Craig Hedge. Craig, I can't read the last name. It's okay.
My name is Craig Hermey, 12 Brittany Way in Nashua. I think the prior speakers have summarized my position pretty eloquently. I'm not in objection to downtown dining at all. I am 100% against anyone getting something for nothing. I've been at previous meetings where statements have been made that the restaurants have been suffering through COVID and barely getting by. Well, the entire town, the entire state, the entire country has suffered through it. And as a gig worker, I can tell you that I too have suffered, and I didn't get any financial reimbursement from the government, as I'm sure some of the restaurants have this past year. I'm not at all opposed to downtown dining. I think it's a great thing to do, get people outside. However, it should be paid for, especially if you're expanding your footprint to the extent it was last year, impeding the traffic in the roads. If you want the space, pay for it. I thank you very much.
Okay, I'm going to go to Zoom. Rich Lannan.
Hi, Rich Lannan, 11 McGrath Road, Pelham, with an offices in Nashua. I do own two buildings on Main Street. They're mixed-use buildings. I have retailers, I have restaurants, residents, offices, and so forth. But I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for or against my tenants there. As I think I've spoken in many of the meetings in the past, I am very much in favor of the expanded dining. But a little different, lately, I've been thinking about some of the opposition and some of the reasons why some people are against it. And one of them is obviously is the traffic and the fact that the traffic is slowed down and bottlenecks. Excuse me. And others, including some letters, talked about it's all about the restaurants and it's all about downtown, it's not about the residents of the city. I agree with all of that, except that downtown is just that, downtown Nashua, but downtown's everywhere, is not supposed to be a thoroughfare, it's not supposed to be Amherst Street, Denny Wells Highway, or every turnpike. It's downtown. The traffic is too fast, downtown is not a 30 or 40 mile an hour zone, and I think it's proven that the traffic has slowed. I guess heaven forbid that it takes two or three or four minutes longer to go an extra mile from north-south or south-north on Main Street. And downtown has become much more vibrant. There's no question that the restaurants probably have the most direct benefit in their pocketbook. This is not just about the restaurants. This is about the restaurants, there's retail, but it's about people coming downtown. There's no question that the expanded outside dining, but really the barriers, by slowing the traffic down, it's been talked about as far as parking spaces, there's so much parking in the downtown area. I mean, again, if you don't park right in front of a store, that seems to be a problem, and I don't know why. If you park in a mall parking lot, you're going to walk a lot further than walking from one of the garages. So I think making Main Street two lanes, slowing the traffic down, and if you're looking just to go north-south, there's plenty of other ways to go. And really, this is about downtown resets the vibe for the whole city, which is all the residents of Nashua and beyond. And I just think what we saw in the last couple of years, it was because of COVID it was happening, but there's not a lot of good things that come out of COVID, but I think this was one of them that shows what can happen and what can make downtown more vibrant. And if the downtown thrives, and it shows by all the new stores and new restaurants that have come into downtown just over the last couple of years, a thriving downtown makes the whole city better. So I urge the board to please vote this. You know, this new plan, compromise plan, and vote for that now, this thing in a positive way. Thank you for your time.
Lou Juris.
Good evening, Lou Juris here. Got an opportunity this evening to approve resolutions that include improving our sewer system. You know, monies for the situation with Penichuck, the water company, the police, there was a police issue, police contract for the cops. You know, of course, the teachers and associated professionals who've worked through this pandemic, whether it was remote, hybrid, caring, instructing our students during this time, checking on their emotional well-being, and going through the starts and stops and everything that's affecting their personal lives, and certainly their health and having to try to avoid pandemic. This is a big night to really do something civic and something almost profound for the city of Nashua, with the, of course, a lot of the talk, a lot of the discussion this evening on downtown, the heart of the city, like it is in many towns and cities across the country, you're seeing a lot of effort trying to be put into these downtowns. And one of the ways to do it is to make them, as said before, more pedestrian-friendly, more walkable, more livable, more commerce, and variety for a variety of commercial endeavors, as well as for a variety of living situations and people's personal enjoyment. Let's not take people's fun away, please. This is, you've got a few short months during these times in the good weather, and people seem to enjoy it and just think, with the new teachers' contract, we may have a few more instructors going down there during the evenings or whenever they want to blow off a little steam after a long couple of years, and certainly in a safe way, being outside. So it's, there's a lot on the docket tonight, and we can really, we can really, you know, make this happen, make this happen for the city and for the region around us, and to keep in mind that we are in a competitive situation with the other towns and cities, and this is going to keep us at least in the game or ahead of the game, so we can come out of here, we can come out of here as winners. So please do, please do the effort tonight, and let's approve these matters, and let's move on to the next chapter. Thank you.
Mr. Juris, can I have your address, please?
If you don't know, yeah, it's over at Hainsbury, 56 Hainsbury.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sonia Prince.
Hi, thank you for having me, 49 Tufts Drive, Sonia Prince. I'm excited. That was one of the positive things, if you can count many positive things, out of the COVID, is the downtown. I thoroughly enjoyed it. I've been living here for 25 years, and my husband and I and my friends have met up downtown more than ever before. I enjoy Peddlers, Tostos, Martha's, Judge Bell's, San Francisco Kitchen. I can go on and on of how wonderful it was. I do agree, some of them, the barriers don't look that great, so maybe there's some kind of decorative thing where you could put a barrier and then maybe a little metal gate or a flower pot or something to make it look a little more appealing. But overall, it was enjoyable. I have to think about each restaurant probably employs anywhere from five to 10 people, so we need to keep those people working and their taxpayers, so we want to keep them here. Also, I am concerned, because of COVID, another reason why we should keep it in place, there's another wave right now, 172% jump in new cases within one month in New Hampshire. So yeah, we may not have as many deaths, but we still have long haulers and sick people and teachers out. And right now, I'm talking to a lot of teachers, and they're telling me a lot of their students are out. So it's just a matter of time before the teachers become sick, and they have to stay out until they test negative, and that would be a nightmare like we had this winter. So a lot of kids were left unsupervised, there was more bullying, we had a locker room awful event that happened at one of the high schools, it was absolutely terrifying. So I hope that that doesn't happen, and if need be, I hope that you will consider putting the masks back on for indoors, maybe in public buildings or schools. And finally, for the contract for the teachers, I spoke about that last night, 1.5 years. I know COVID had a little to do with the timeline, but really, compared to the firefighters who didn't make any concessions of $2.5 million a year on the health plan, you know, treating teachers like that is just embarrassing for a city sexist. I'm sorry, it is what it is. The fire department, the police department never get treated that way. So I hope that this all goes smoothly, and we do get repairs for our storage and everything else that we need. I think you guys are doing a great job, and I thank you all, because I know your job isn't easy, and you're doing a great job, you know, rolling with the punches as they come. So I hope we keep doing that with reasonable expectations. Thank you.
Next, I have Charlene Seleski.
Thank you all for taking the time to listen to all the objectives and positives and negatives of what's being presented to you. Charlene Seleski, 9 Hill Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. I'm going to start out first, but I just wanted to say that I'm a little disappointed that the compromises that were suggested weren't considered, one being that the dates for outdoor dining go from the end of May to the beginning of September instead of from the beginning of May until the end, middle of October. I think that was reasonable and considerable. There was no consideration for the compromise on the amount of hours that outdoor dining could take place, which I had thought that five to 10 evenings, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, that would not tie up the whole downtown seven days a week, 24/7. The handicap needs that everyone keeps referring to, that every single space is a handicap space, but they don't need to be marked. Well, if they're not marked, anybody can park there, someone handicap comes along, they have nowhere to go. And I just wondered, did the ADA come down and recommend this, or how did this come to fruition? The third thing was the head-end parking that used to be downtown. They took away the head-end parking to make four lanes, but now we're shrinking down to two lanes, and we're supposed to think that that can accommodate traffic. I think we should go back to the head-end parking and make more space for parking for all the other businesses besides restaurants. I work in a restaurant, I'm for outdoor dining, I'm not against that, I'm against the barriers. I understand now that the sidewalks are considered a right-of-way, so I don't refer to them as a sidewalk anymore, but on the definition of that, it means that you cannot obstruct a right-of-way. And I've also asked the question, where in the middle of the road does a city own to? Is it 50 feet in from the middle of the road to either side, each way? Because I know in my neighborhood, it's 25 feet into the center that the city owns, doesn't maintain, but owns. Downtown is being maintained by the city, and that's my dollars. So I question whether the people that live on the side streets should have that detriment of a longer time for a response, for police, for safety, for any of that third-story people trying to get where they need to go. I don't think this has been thought through thoroughly. I would like to say that if it needs more time, I don't think pushing this out to the end of May would be a problem.
30 seconds.
And I also would like it to be a ballot, on the ballot next year. I would like for the cost to go to the restaurants, spread it out, for anybody that wants to use downtown space. I want to be able to navigate my time on the Main Street walking. I don't want to have to say, excuse me, every two minutes, or can I get this wheelchair through for you? Can I help you get through? I just don't think that the thought's been put into everybody, but only the people that benefit from having that. And I'm not against dining, I'm not against that at all. I would just like to see a few other things taken into consideration, maybe a little more time. Thank you.
Cheryl Roy.
Cheryl Roy, 11 Hill Street, Nashua. I'm here once again against the extended dining, the barriers. I'm not against dining outside, I think that's great, but I am against the barriers What I've heard at these meetings, all these meetings I've come to, hasn't changed my idea about it. My feeling is, once emergency, fire, and police mentioned there was going to be delayed times, I think all conversations should have stopped. I don't understand why the safety of the citizens isn't a priority. I also think this should be, should have been put on a ballot vote. The taxpayers should be the ones that are making the decision here. We're the ones that are going to have to foot this bill, and I for one, don't want to pay for it. Another concern I have is about ADA compliance. I quickly went online and looked up a compliance checklist, and I can't see where this drawing that you have for these barriers as of right now even is in compliance. You know, van accessibility, where are you going to come up with 11 feet for a handicap van and also have, it has to be 11 feet wide, and you need a five-foot access route? Plus, they have to not have a step, the handicap person has to not have to step up. Well, if they're going onto a sidewalk, they have to step up. I don't understand how this is compliant. I don't get it. I'd like to hear somebody explain that to me. I think that this is just being pushed through, I don't think it's being thought out thoroughly, you're just in a hurry to get it done, and I think it's wrong. I think us taxpayers, I think there should be more work done on this, the taxpayers should have a big stake in this, because we're paying. Thank you.
Next, we have Scott on Zoom. Scott, we have your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, 49 Congress, 49 Congress Street, Apartment 6. I'd like to speak on behalf of the teachers' contract. Please support the teachers' contract, and I am agreeing with others about the barricades. If we can make them, if we can make it where it's safe for the fire department to get by only, maybe make it more interesting, like make it better. It's just a suggestion. I would like to see that suggest, I'd like to see them think about the barricades, but making them smaller, maybe look at towns like Manchester or other towns. And please, when the, please, when the thing comes up at the Finance Committee about Access Nashua, please, Lori, please, don't let, please don't let somebody take Access Nashua away from us. We need, we need Access Nashua for Access Channel. Please, when that comes up at the Finance Committee, please have it in your heart to support Access Nashua, because I'm a producer of special talk, and I need that channel that I've had our show on for 10 years, and now they want to snatch it away.
Scott, that's not on our agenda this evening, Scott?
No, just letting you know, when the Finance Committee comes up and you, please, have it in you guys' hearts to listen to both sides. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Representative Linda Harriet Gaffray.
Good evening, Madam President, and to the Board of Aldermen and to our Mayor Donches. I am calling in support of the teachers' contract. We have some of the best teachers that there is in the United States, and I know that for a fact, and I think that they deserve all that they're asking for. And this has been a very difficult time, particularly in the last three years, for our teachers, as well as for our students, but they've done their best to keep our children afloat. So I appreciate the work that Nashua teachers have done for our children that are here. I'm kind of grateful right now that I've brought a few children through the school system and several grandchildren, but right now, I have no one in the school system in Nashua, but I still appreciate the work that has been done through the years and what's happening right now. And secondly, I just want all hats off to Alderman O'Brien for the excellent work that he did at the State House to bring some funds back to the city. I appreciate that, I knew the hard work that he put through. We're actually going to have this in the permanent journal for the state, so that's something that the city of Nashua can always look back and hear and understand his speech that day on the- his speech that day on the floor. One thing I can say, we were all very, very proud. And last but not least, in terms of the barrier, I support what's come back from the committee in terms of the barrier. So I'm gonna make that short and just say hello to everyone there because I know you guys have a long night.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, that is the end of our public comment period.
Elizabeth Lou, 17 Ruby Street. I arrived late, so I wasn't able to get onto that list. I think that, I think that the, I think that the hopes of expanded dining downtown are a little bit, could be incorrect. The way I see it, Nashua was one of the few communities in southern New Hampshire that expanded their downtown right away when the, when the COVID came. You know, I think it got a reputation for being a great outside space, but after COVID, when, you know, people can do more close to their home, you're not gonna, you may not see the same traffic through. I just wanted to point that out. I get really troubled when people want to say that downtown is not a thoroughfare and that 40 miles per hour is just too fast. People, I, I live close to downtown and I see people driving 25 miles per hour. If we have a problem with speeding, we have a police department for that. We don't need to expand, we don't need to shut off lanes of travel because we can't control traffic and speed. I live close to Hayward Farms and I do business near the Riverwalk Cafe. And the only reasonable way to do that is by going through downtown. And I find it very childish for the downtown merchants and property owners to feel that it's wrong that I travel through their space and not, don't stop and spend some money. A lot of us are in this position where there is a main street between our home and where we're going, and we, we are used to using the roads. And it's very, very problematic for me to see these lanes shut down. There exist privately, privately owned vacant lots behind the restaurants on downtown Main Street. These lots are mainly used as leased parking that generate revenues for the property owners. And these property owners mostly are the business owners also, or they, they rent to the business owners. What attention was given to the option of using those areas for expanded dining? This would have been, this would have increased our parking revenue. Lastly, I asked to speak, I wrote to all of you, asked to speak with my at-large, as not one of you contacted me. I know I could call you, but I know that I'll probably get a message.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joanne St. John. I live at 25 Bellevue Ave. in Nashua, New Hampshire. Just quickly, I want to give a history of Main Street, Main Street USA, Main Street Nashua, Main Street anywhere. Main Streets evolve over the years, and we have to evolve with changes. So when I first moved here in 1977, I remember Main Street, and it was very different than it was then. I remember Martha's had this big orange and turquoise lovely little sign, but, you know, everything was sort of like, I came from Massachusetts, I came from the North Shore, so it was like, Michael, what did you get me into moving up here? So, that was my late husband. Anyway, but he loved it here in Nashua. He was a teacher for many, many years, and I'm, I'm very proud that we ended up making this our city and loving it as much as we did. So just quickly, I want to say that I remember, so I don't know how many years everybody has lived here, but I've lived here a long, long time, and I've seen the many changes. But I remember when, when Main Street was not what it was today. It went many, many years. It looked pretty desolate and pretty sad. And I have to say that myself, I think that Michael Timothy started the change for our city and for Main Street. I'm sure that he took quite a risk because there was nothing down there. But anyway, I just want to give credit to all the people that have listened to everybody this evening. My opinion is, of course, that we keep the barriers up. It is an evolving thing of now we are used to being like France or having outdoor dining when we didn't used to do that. So thank you all for your consideration. I do hope that that is the way that you will vote tonight. I know the many people that I have talked to, we love it and are looking forward to it. Also, in addition to the teacher's contract, I'm very much in favor of giving the teacher, making the teacher's contract absolute a certain. I really, really feel that they really were treated badly this past year. I went to almost every school board meeting and they were not treated nicely. So I'm so sorry to say that. But again, thank you all for your attention and thank you for letting me speak.
Come on up, sir. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
And happy Easter. My name is Albert Mueller. I live on Bay Street at the North End. First, about the jersey barriers. In my opinion, they're a very ugly sight. Number two, about the cost of it. We heard, I don't know the figures, but we heard it's very expensive. And not only does it cost a lot of money to erect them, it costs just as much money to remove them again. And why should the taxpayer pay for that? If the business or the restaurants, the town, the restaurants profit from it. And as far as the four lanes, gone, only two lanes, that's not right. Because we have emergency vehicles such as police, fire department, and they cannot go through in only two lanes. So that's not right either. And as far as the dining is concerned, before the pandemic, the restaurants, they could accommodate all the people who wanted to eat there. And now they have to go out on the sidewalk and on part of the street, and the inside, the indoor tables, they are empty. That's not right. That's my opinion, and I hope you will consider this.
Okay, I'm gonna move on. Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding award of contract in excess of $1 million for sewer replacement.
Alderman Kamo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, an award, the construction contract for the 2022 sewer replacement project to Sir Construction West Incorporated of Winchester, New Hampshire, in the amount of $2,135,950. Contingent upon bond approval, funding will be through Department 169 Waste Water, Fund Bond, Activity Sewer Rehab.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Say none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Two communications have been received from Larry D. Goodroom, Chief Executive Officer of Penachuck Corporation. The first is with respect to the notice of annual meeting of sole shareholder and proxy statement, proxy card, and annual report to the sole shareholder. And the second is with regard to Penachuck's audited consolidated financial statements for years ended December 31st of 2021 and December 30th of 2020.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications as read and refer them to the Penachuck Water Special Committee. Petitions?
There is none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Joint convention with the Public Library Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll declare that the Board of Alderman meet in joint convention with the Board of Library Trustees for the purpose of re-electing trustee Scott Jakewood and call for nomination.
Good evening, Linda Laflambeau. I am the chairman of the Nashua Public Library Board of Trustees, and on their behalf, I'm proud to nominate Scott Jakewood for a seven-year term ending in 2029.
Thank you. Call for the vote, Alderman O'Brien.
Scott Jakewood.
Oh, Madam Clerk, I made you take over your job. I'm sorry.
If I can call for the trustees first, trustee Bergeron. Trustee Apicia. Trustee Jakewood. Justy.
He's, he's gonna come to the.
I'm sorry, trustee Jakewood. Trustee Kane. Trustee Kuna Parity. Trustee Laflame. Trustee Pincinot. Alderman O'Brien.
Still voting for Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Sullivan.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Cle.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Moran.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Lopez.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Jettie.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Clemmons.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Kamo.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Dowd.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Govea.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Cathy.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Tebow.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Scott Jakewood.
Alderman Mulchier.
Scott Jakewood.
Mayor Donches.
Scott, excuse me, Scott Jakewood.
You have 18 for trustee Scott Jakewood.
I'll declare the Scott Jakewood duly reappointed to the Board of Library Trustees with a term to expire March 31st, 2029. Mr. Jakewood, would you come up to take the oath of office, please?
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Nashua Public Library according to the best of your abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God? Congratulations.
There being no objection, I will declare that the joint convention now arise. Appointments by the mayor.
To the Honorable Board of Alderman, I have this day appointed Deba Mangalot of 18 Wild Girls Drive, Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28th, 2025, and respectfully request that this appointment be confirmed.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor as read and refer to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 7th, 2022 Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 9th, 2022 Joint Meeting on Committee on Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 14th, 2022 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 15th, 2022 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Special Budget Review Committee meeting held last night regarding proposed Resolution 2222. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last evening, we had a, a public hearing on this as well as the Budget Committee. This is on the teacher's contract and, and also we did R 22008, which was the special revenue account for the Port Street. The R 22022 for the teacher's contract was unanimously approved by the Budget Committee with one abstention. And R 22008 passed.
Thank you, Alderman Dowd. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the Board of Registars. Adriana LoPera Aspidia, 137 Chestnut Street, Apartment 2, Nashua, and Gwendolyn Michaeloff, 11 Apple Tree Green, Nashua, both with terms to expire December 31st, 2024. Are either of those individuals here this evening? Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I, I have no objection to the appointments that are brought before us, but I would like to at least let the record show, as mentioned earlier tonight, that the Board of Registrar should be a member of three people. These are two appointees, and I was just curious as to know the process about selecting a third, selecting a third Board of Registrar.
Mayor?
Well, I have to look to see what the appointment status of who is, and I will consider anybody who's, I think is qualified.
So anybody that is interested should be.
Now, there has to be, there has to be a, I believe, a partisan balance here, too. I don't believe that more than two people can be members of the same party out of the three.
Correct. That's right. Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, President Wilshire. Just a clerical thing, it's actually Adriana, and their, her address is actually, hold on, 15 Hanover Street now, not, they don't live, just for the record.
Thank you. Alderman Cathy.
Madam Chair, I don't necessarily have an objection, but I do have a question for Corporation Counsel, if I may?
Certainly.
Attorney Bolton, in, in the city charter, it states that shall appoint three voters of Nashua who shall constitute a Board of Registrar of Voters. Does that then mean there has to be three in order for it to be considered a Board of Registrars? Or could it be one, or three, or two, or whatever the number is?
I don't read that to say they have to be appointed all on the same day.
But does there have to be three for it to be a board that can do what the board is supposed to do? Like, does it have to be full with those numbers? Or can it just do its duties with just the two?
No, if, if a quorum is present, a board can perform the duties of the board.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is Adriana or Gwendolyn here to take the oath of office this evening? Not seeing them, they will both be sworn in at a later date.
Cable Television Advisory Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointments of the following individuals to the Cable Television Advisory Board. Steve Buxton, 70 East Hollis Street, Nashua; Lauren Byers, 9 Riverside Street, Nashua; Joseph Fay, 28 Officer James Roach Drive, Nashua; and Gregory Rodriguez of 141 Led Street, Nashua, all within definite terms. I know that Joseph Fay is here, if you would come forward to take the oath of office, and I'm not sure that Lauren or Steve Buxton are here, so.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Cable Television Advisory Board of the City of Nashville according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Cultural Connections Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the Cultural Connections. Sandra Pratt, 24 Gingras Drive, Nashua; Rosemary Ford, 22 Nova Road, both with terms to expire March 1st, 2025. Is Sandra or Rosemary here in the, in the chamber this evening? They will both be sworn in at a later date.
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Timothy There being no objection, I will confirm the new appointment of Timothy Senet, 62 Underhill Street, Nashua, to the Downtown Improvements Committee with a term to expire April 1st, 2025, and I know Tim's here, come on up.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Downtown Improvement Committee of the City of Nashville according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire, so help you God. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Planning Board.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointments of the following individuals to the Planning Board. Robert Bolinger, 5 Decatur Drive, Nashua, and Scott Leclerc, 10 Dale Lily Drive, Nashua, both with terms to expire March 31st, 2025. Is Robert and Scott, either of them here, or both of them here? They will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of resolution R 2213, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,208,325 for the city's sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures.
Alderman Cathy.
Oh, sorry, I'm on the wrong page. Okay, sorry. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 22013, authorizing the mayor and the city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $6,208,325 for the city's sewer infrastructure program and sewer structures.
The motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'm sorry. Okay, sorry, need to do a roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Mulchier.
Yes.
You have fifteen yeas and zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2213 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 2214, relative to the transfer of $44,400 from account 70100, General Contingency into Department 179 Library, accounting classification 53, Professional and Technical Services, to fund half the cost of a facility assessment and master plan for the library building.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 22014.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 22-14 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 2215, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and Teamsters Local 633 from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026.
Alderman Sullivan.
I would like to make a motion for final passage of R 22015, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and Teamsters Local 633 from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2026.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Lopez.
I thought I heard Alderman Sullivan refer to it as R 22015, and I think it's R 22014 on the agenda.
It was, but I changed it because the previous resolution was 014, and I thought it was a typo.
It is.
It is.
It is.
It's 015.
Madam President, I think I am a typo.
I'm sorry, what?
I think I am a typo.
You're a typo? Okay. We'll go with that. Discussion on the motion for Resolution 2215. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries, Resolution 2215 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 2218, authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck East Utility, Inc. to borrow funds and accept a grant from the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R 22-018, authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck East Utility Incorporated to borrow funds and accept a grant from the State of New Hampshire Drinking Water and Groundwater Trust Fund.
You've heard the motion, is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, Resolution 2218 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 2219, authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck East Utility, Inc. to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you again, Madam President. I motion for final passage of R 22-019, authorizing Pennechuck Corporation and Pennechuck East Utilities Incorporated to enter into a term loan with CoBank ACB.
Motion is for final passage, discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2219 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of resolution R 2222, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Teachers Union, Local 1044, AFT, AFL-CIO, from September 1st of 2021 through August 31st of 2025, and authorizing a related transfer and supplemental appropriation.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R 22022, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashville Board of Education and the Nashville Teachers Union, Local 1044, AFT, AFL-CIO, from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2025, and authorizing a related transfer and supplemental appropriation. I'd like to quickly speak through.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last night, this unanimously was approved by the Budget Committee, and it's been a long and arduous negotiation, and I think both sides did an amicable job in coming to a conclusion, and I recommend final passage.
Discussion, further discussion. Alderman Tebow.
Yeah, I just want to make a quick comment. Last three years, the teachers have gone through complete hell, starting with having to stop teaching, to having to go hybrid teaching, to having to go a full year back with masks, no masks. It's been a tough year for them, and, you know, they were out there at the Board of Education, holding their signs and pushing the Board of Education to pass this contract or to negotiate this contract, and I just want to thank both sides for coming together, and I want to thank the teachers for hanging in there. I know last time I got the numbers, there was a good forty teachers leaving the, leaving this year, and that's a high for quite many years, and it's probably more now, I hope not. And, you know, getting to this point where we're going to have to sign this contract, I think it's great, and I'm looking forward to voting yes on it tonight, so thank you.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. On this particular vote, I'm going to have to abstain. My daughter is an employee, she's a school nurse, even though she lives independent of me, is an adult, very strong woman, but because I get a birthday card and Christmas presents, and the only thing, she doesn't even give me free advice, so anyway, I'm going to have to abstain anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say quickly, I feel very lucky and blessed that I was able to give my two children something that I didn't have growing up, which was the ability to go through a single school district from kindergarten until graduation. My daughter graduated from Nashville High School South in 2020, and my son is currently on his way to being a twelve-season athlete, he will graduate next year, and like I said, I moved around about every three years when I was their age, and nothing makes me happier than to see them go through such a great district from start to finish, and I will be more than happy to vote yes on this tonight, thank you.
Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. I think is the, probably the last person in this room to sit in a classroom at Nashville High South. Very strongly had a great education coming up through the system, and I hope we can continue that going forward, and I look forward to voting yes on this.
Further discussion. Seeing none, this requires a roll call vote, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Abstain.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
An enthusiastic yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Absolutely, yes.
Alderman Mulchier.
Yes.
You have fourteen yeas, zero nays, and one abstention.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2222 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances.
Second reading of ordinance O 22008, relative to seasonal road closures and elimination of certain on-street parking for extended outdoor dining and other non-vehicular use.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to amend O 22008 by replacing it with the Goldenrod copy of the amendments made at the Joint Committee of Infrastructure and Planning and Economic Development Committee. May I speak to my motion?
Sure.
Madam President, as you know, and I think you were there, we held a session, and several were long, and one went way into the wee hours of the night, but I got to thank my fellow committee members of both the Infrastructure Committee and the PEDC. We really came to resolve on this, although I don't agree with some of it a hundred percent, but it is a compromise, and I think it better, gives us a better vision of the modernization of what our downtown can look like. Thank you, Madam President.
Motion is to amend. Further discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of R 22-022 as amended, now I would like to speak to the motion.
Certainly.
This was a very thoughtful and tough process that we came to, the Joint Committee plus the task force. I would like to thank everyone for their time, my co-chair Alderman O'Brien, who tolerated me very well, and all the members of the community who joined the task force, as well as the BOA members that sat in and helped make this a great proposal that's a compromise. And I think at the end of the day, I'm supporting this because it's for the people of downtown, it's for the businesses downtown, it goes to a vision, I think, of eventually a walkable downtown, two lanes, and I'm very optimistic to see how much business this is going to bring to our city, and to not just the businesses downtown, but also to make it a thriving, prosperous place for the residents of downtown, because that's their neighborhood, and we're adding a little bit more to make that a vibrant neighborhood, and I can see myself supporting this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is for final passage as amended. Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I, you know, I want to let all the people who wrote to me about the barrier issue, there were a lot of people who were adamantly opposed to the barriers, you know, I did receive your emails, I did, you know, I did hear, you know, some of you called, you know, I did hear you, you know, I think the people who are against the barriers, you know, kind of summarize their opposition, you know, we've heard it, and forgive me for saying it over and over again, but, you know, people objected to the traffic congestion, they objected to the appearance of the barriers, they objected to the, the barriers taking away some parking, and, you know, the issue of the emergency vehicles, police and fire and ambulance. So, you know, I think that, you know, and, you know, I know people felt very strongly about this, and the fact that we have not rejected the barriers completely is very disappointing to them, but, you know, the issues that people raised were all, were all considered, were all looked at, and, you know, this, you know, plan was an effort to, you know, I should say, there were also a lot of people who loved the expanded outdoor dining, not only the sidewalk dining, but the expanded into the street, and so they were very much in favor of our continuing this program. So, so this plan that we worked long and hard on, and we tried to, we tried to compromise. I think one of the biggest compromises is removing the barriers from, from the Water Park Main Street intersection to Franklin Canal and Main Street intersection. You know, our city engineer expressed the opinion that he thought that that would go a long way on relieving a lot of that congestion that people have complained about. You know, I don't, I don't know, I'm hoping he's right, I hope, I think he's right, and I hope that he's right, you know, we'll have to see what happens this summer. The appearance issue, we voted to, you know, paint them all a neutral color. You know, the parking issue, we removed a lot of the barriers, we provided for a lot more parking. And the, the emergency vehicle issue, you know, I know people talk about the police and fire, but, you know, the police chief and the fire chief were both here, and, you know, neither one of them said that they were against this, they both kind of said, you know, we'll have to see, you know, the plan is new, we'll have to see how it works out. The city engineer talked about how he has provided for space between the barriers and the first lane of traffic. In his opinion, this allows some, some room for vehicles to move over to allow emergency vehicles to pass, and again, I'm hoping he's right about that. So, you know, I want people to know that I heard you, I, you know, I worked very hard on this, I made a lot of motions, I won some, I lost some, and I want to remind everybody that the ordinance says that, you know, this is adjustable, tweaks can be made. Upon recommendation of the Director of Public Works, the parking manager, and the approval of the Committee on Infrastructure, the mayor may adjust locations of barriers, parking spaces, fees for parking, time for parking spaces, and location of parking spaces as circumstances warrant. So, it's, you know, it's, it's not cast in concrete, pardon the pun, you know, so adjustments can be made. The other issue that was, that was raised was the objection to the restaurants being allowed to use sidewalk space and, and, you know, street space without paying anything for it. So, you know, I heard that, I, you know, some of us, you know, a motion was made to charge a fee, and some of us voted for that, but the majority voted against it, so, and, you know, the suggestion was made that, that this is an issue that is not forgotten, the mayor has indicated that he's willing to look at it, you know, the chairman of the task force, Chairman O'Brien, suggested that this is something that should be, you know, studied further, so it's not completely out of the picture, and, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, that we'll continue to look at that, and, you know, on that issue. that we'll continue to look at that, and, you know, on that issue, I hope people understand that, you know, we're, you know, we're, you know, no one Alderman can make things happen the way he or his constituents want. It's the Board of Aldermen that acts as a board, so we have to reach a consensus. And, you know, there comes a time when you don't have the votes, you don't have the votes, and you have to, you know, do the best you can. And so I think, you know, the committee voted for this plan, and I'm supporting it because, you know, I think we tried hard to come up with a compromise that will hopefully allow for expanded outdoor dining without harming the other businesses downtown, and without causing, you know, too much inconvenience to the, you know, the rest of the residents in the city. So, thank you.
Alderman Clea.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I know a lot of work was done, and hopefully I don't muddy the waters here, but I'd like to make an amendment to what has been passed, or what has been voted on. I'd like to amend to return two full spaces in front of 127 Main Street, which is San Francisco Kitchen. That would be striking the, shortening the length of the barriers to the northwest corner of Factory Street and Main Street by 20 feet from the north side, and returning those two spaces. I'd also like, in addition to motion to allow that beyond that, those two spaces, that one dedicated and signed handicap spot be placed there. The two spaces does displace a handicap spot that's there, so I'd like to move a handicap spot that has signage and is directly there in front of the Wingate, I think it's basically in front of the Wingate property there, as well as to move the 15-minute parking behind that. So it would be the two spaces for San Francisco Kitchen, the single handicap space behind that, and 15-minute parking, and if I could just speak to it a little bit.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I know we all got an email from Mr. Harday, and I called him, and I spoke to him, and I explained to him that while I understood that he said no barriers, and that they had come to an agreement, I also talked to him that I had spoken to Ms. Gomez, and there had not been an agreement. It was something that I think he didn't quite understand. They had not really come to an agreement. We talked back and forth, and I explained to him that even though he sent us a letter saying he didn't want the barriers, it was the city and the city alone that gets to determine where the barriers go. It was his right to say what went between the barriers and his property. So he could say, he could put the barriers up, but he could say, no tables there. He could say no planter in front of Wingate's if that's what he wanted to do. He understood what I said, and he agreed that he would have no problems with her putting tables there if we did in fact put up the barriers. So having talked to him, I explained to him exactly what I was planning on doing. I told him I was going to make sure that there was a handicap spot there, because one had been displaced, and I believe Director Cummings had said they kind of moved it across the street. Pardon, my mouth is very dry. And I said that does not help Wingate, because that was one of their, Mr. Wingate's concern was that there was no handicap spot, so I felt one handicap spot should be in fact put there, excuse me. And I think this kind of resolves the problem. It allows San Francisco Kitchen to have the two spaces, and it's, I believe, only increasing the overall by one space from what we just voted on. It guarantees a signage handicap spot there, and it still allows that 15-minute parking for pickup and drop off. So, thank you.
Alderman Clemmons, and then Alderman Cathy.
Thank you. I certainly am going to support this amendment. I was unable to attend the two meetings because I was taking care of my sick father-in-law in Virginia. Had I been at the meetings, however, I would have advocated that this would be the route that we had gone down. I think it is fair both to San Francisco Kitchen, and I think it is fair to Wingate's as well, because it puts a handicap parking space in front of their business, as well as a 15-minute space, and then beyond that, a regular space. So there's three different kinds of spaces right in front of their location. So, I think that unfortunately, that what was voted on to reduce San Francisco Kitchen's footprint was not, is not enough for their business. I think that, in my opinion, they were one of the largest utilizers of these spaces, because I know some people argued that, you know, doing this in the first place, why are we doing it? Well, San Francisco Kitchen used that outdoor space. In any case, I don't want to belittle what the committee did. I just wanted the opportunity, and I appreciate that Alderman Clea brought this up, to speak and vote how I would have had I been there and been able to. And so I certainly am going to support this. I think it's fair, and I hope that my colleagues will support this as well.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd actually like to defer to Corporation Counsel, because I believe he had some comments about Alderwoman Clea. Did you say you disagreed?
I think some, I think Alderwoman Clea may have said that the owner of the premises had a right to determine what went between the barrier and the edge of the building, or words to that effect.
I did, yes.
I will tell you, that's not the law as I understand it. The city can make the sidewalk any width it wishes, the city can plant decorative trees, install street furniture, benches, planters, rubbish receptacles, all of that is part of the, or part of the city's right pursuant to the easement for viatic use of the right-of-way. There's been a lot of confusion on this, and the fact is that anything related to the viatic use of the right-of-way, the owner of the fee interest has no right to control. The city can determine that with or without the agreement of the fee owner. Now, non-viatic uses, if the property owner, the owner of the fee interest objects, well then perhaps if it is a non-viatic use, and the court determines as such, and that objection could be recognized by the court, and a court could order the non-viatic use not take place.
I stand corrected. Alderman Cathy.
Thank you. I thought that might be the case, and I would not want the city to place barriers where a property owner would then say, I don't want a non-viatic use purpose in front of my building. And so, in theory, we could place the barriers there, and then the property owner who owns both San Francisco Kitchen and Wingate's could say no to extended outdoor dining, and then therefore we have barriers with nothing for outdoor dining, extended outdoor dining behind them, which seems like a waste and defeats the purpose if it's just going to sit there empty. It also feels like the property owner might then think, well, if the barriers are going to be here anyway, I might as well allow extended outdoor dining, when you might not want that. And so I think it behooves us as a city to find out what the property owner wants before we, or what the property owner wants in relation to non-viatic use, before we go ahead and set up the barriers in that particular location. I think that should apply to all of the property owners generally, but in this specific case, we should know before we place barriers.
I'm going to call on Alderman Clea, because I think she might have an answer for that.
I do, I do, and thank you for bringing that point up. As I said, I had spoken to him, and he was in agreement with it. What the agreement he thought had been made was originally Wingate Pharmacy had told San Francisco Kitchen they could put tables there only from 5:00 to 10:00, and had to remove them, and that if they put the table up against their very large plate glass window, that it was a, not a shatterproof, and that it could break, and it could hurt someone, and that was her risk. Who's going to want to do that?
Right.
Who's going to want to take that on? So for all intent purposes, she really could not do that. They came back and said that she did not have to move the tables, that's what was told to the owner of the property, she did not have to move the tables, and the property owner said he would assume all liability. The truth is, I also said to him, well, if you put a table there, knowing that there is a liability, I will contact the city and ask them to certify that someone is not being put into danger, and therefore I don't think that that table really should or would be able to be put there. I gave him my plan, my idea, he liked it very much. He did not want to say no to San Francisco Kitchen, but he has two renters that he absolutely loves, he thinks that they're very good. Wingate has been extraordinary to him, and did not want to irritate or aggravate them in any way, shape, or form. He has been trying to work with them. I said to him, if we put the barriers up, would she be allowed to put the tables up? He said yes. So, but to add to this, that's when I said to him, I want to make sure that Wingate is protected in this, and that they have a handicap spot, because they were losing the one that they had in front of them, and that that 15-minute parking, they're the ones that use it mostly for the pickup and the drop-off. I wanted to ensure that they were taken care of and that they weren't harmed by this. And that's why I put forward those other two items, so, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have Alderman Lopez.
So it's no shock to anybody here that this has been a very tricky issue, and that communication has been very difficult in a lot of areas. What I have found as the Alderman representing downtown is that there has been a lot of passion on the side of people advocating for the removal of the barriers, and a lot of pressure on people who state that they need it for their livelihood. I have heard from Wingate's repeatedly, I have tried to accommodate them last year on a number of occasions, and more specifically here, I think we did accommodate their needs for parking for most of the street, but I do think that it's not fair to a business that needs enough space to actually benefit from it, that we removed one to benefit a business that now has access to a lot more parking. I've also found that unfortunately, a lot of the restaurants that were spoken to, and several of the businesses as well, were not given entirely accurate information as I would see it. They were told things about pharmacies that don't have any parking, and were not aware of the municipal parking behind that pharmacy. The individuals from the pharmacy have represented relationships with a lot of different restaurants as positive and engaging, where those restaurants have, to me, categorized those as very different. And there were a number of people that had asked me to support outdoor dining that were represented on the petition that was presented to this board opposing outdoor dining, including San Francisco Kitchen, and that petition was represented as being business owners and concerned property owners on Main Street, where a number of the individuals who signed did not represent the businesses. Several of the business owners said that they didn't fully understand what was being asked of them, and being a host and a welcoming establishment that's trying to operate a business, and having somebody present who is not taking subtle hints, they regretted signing in order to have that person leave, because ultimately they had to answer for that in a lot of other ways. So this has been a very contentious issue. I think when you have two neighbors who need the same resources, the same aspects, it is the role of the city to arbitrate and to manage with structured guidelines so that there aren't expectations that compete and interfere with each other, and so that there isn't communication that people put out in the heat of the moment that they can't necessarily retract later. I respect greatly what Lena and Ruben Gomez have had to put up with, being essentially the focal point of much of our discussions, in addition to them also trying to run businesses. And I appreciate that they came in to sustain San Francisco Kitchen after the previous owners were essentially ready to sell it. I think it's been a positive influence downtown. Wingate's has certainly had its history downtown as well, and I don't think we should be making legislation or policies that absolutely deny one or the other access, but I also think that there's been a lot of speak, speaking, there's been a lot of articulation around compromises that really weren't made, and I received an email even today from Mr. Wingate requesting that I just absolutely say no, and indicating that he's absolutely opposed to it, despite constant articulation of compromise and interest. I think when it comes to business and it comes to passions that individuals have, compromise is not as easy as it sounds, and I think that we, as Aldermen, have seen that. And it's, none of these situations are particularly simple or straightforward. We can't, I mean, we referenced King Solomon's decisions a couple of times, and his choice was a little bit risky, as I recall it, and I think we need to be very careful and very mindful of this. So in looking at the amendment that Alderman Clea is offering, and in listening to the testimony from the Gomez's, I think adding a parking lot space back is fair, to give them enough space to do what they actually need to do with the space. I think if the property owner is willing to put, let them put the tables out there, it will be used, and I think we have been compromising and made accommodations for Wingate's to a reasonable extent that they're not the only business on the block. So I will support the legislation. I am, as Alderman Jettie pointed out, fully aware that there can be further conversation about making adjustments and that type of thing, and I also support the future plans to recoup some of the expenses that we lose from parking revenue by charging restaurants. I just think we need to make sure we have a plan for where that money's going. We have to have a clear understanding of what we're charging for, and that that has to go through the same transparency processes that we use for everything else. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly, did you have your hand up?
I'll wait till we...
Okay, Alderman Tebow.
Talk about the amendment.
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, we've heard a lot about some of these restaurants on Main Street, you know, not paying Nashville taxes. Well, the Gomez's live in Ward 6. They live here in town, and I don't know if they own or not own their home, but if they're renting, that tax is being put into their rent. So they are Nashville citizens. They live here, and, you know, you know, in their own words in the email that they sent all of us, they said that they felt bullied by people on their block, and, you know, they felt like they were being looked at differently than a Martha's or a Michael Buckley's restaurants, right? You know, they haven't been there as long owning this business. They weren't allowed to get, they weren't eligible for the, and she didn't bring it up tonight, but she's brought it up before, they weren't eligible for the COVID loans that some other businesses got. And so it's taken more than just, you know, a COVID-free couple of months, and even though we're not really COVID-free, but you know what I mean, COVID-free enough that people can go into their restaurant. It's taken them a lot longer to recover from that. You know, no one's, like I said, no one's going to bully Billy or Michael, but they feel like they need to bully them. And, you know, I don't think giving them one spot back so they can try to really establish their restaurant even more with them as the owners, get back on their feet. I know supply chain has been tough, you know, everything's gone up in price. They have a great establishment there, and I would like to see them get that spot back. And I think it was a great idea to add the handicap spot back as well. I think that was perfect, because we need one on that side in that area, so, thank you.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say, I cannot support this amendment, nor this legislation as a whole. And I'll speak to the amendment first. I did read the email today, and now I'm trying to keep track of side conversations that were had, and now we want to make an amendment to this amendment because of side conversations that were had. I can't support that. Overall, I can't support this legislation because I listen to the people... Overall, I can't support this legislation because I listened to the people, I read the emails, I heard the concerns from Public Safety. I think there is an idea out there. I just don't think this is the one. Hats off to all my colleagues that spent hours upon hours times that number of people trying to come up with a solution. I just can't support this one. Thanks.
Alderman Koppel.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. On the amendment, I personally kind of feel like I'm in between both the Gomez's and Mr. Wingate. I've had what I feel like is a good relationship with both of them. And the analogy of King Solomon was brought up and where I have a decision to make, you know, who to side with. Unfortunately for my relationship with Mr. Wingate, I'm going to side with the Gomez's on this because they are my constituents. And I have been an advocate since I was elected to the idea of us being representative of the citizens of our ward. And I plan to vote for the amendment because they are my constituents and I will support their request.
Alderman Moran.
So I had a conversation with Ms. Gomez and I was one of the task force members that voted for the limiting of the, of the space. And at the time, I thought it was going to create two spaces. And after getting the email from Director Cummings, that's clearly not the outcome of what I thought I was voting for. So even though I was very concerned about amendments being brought forth today, this one's not so bad because it gives me the opportunity to rectify a mistake that I made. And so I'll be supporting this amendment because of that.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think, you know, I think we're losing sight of the fact that, you know, when people talk about, you know, taking a space away from San Francisco Kitchen or, you know, giving them a space or giving a space to Wingate, you know, I, I, I think we're losing sight of the fact that, that, you know, those spaces are not ours to give. We, you know, we can decide to put up barriers and I think, you know, Attorney Bolton always chooses his words very carefully and he always cringes when I, you know, when I attempt to repeat what he said and I screw it up, but my understanding is from what he said, you know, tables and chairs are, you know, he referred to them, you know, he refers to non-viatic use. Well, tables and chairs are non-viatic use. So, you know, the city, you know, cannot take a space in front of Wingates and give it to San Francisco Kitchen. Okay? What, what the city can do and this, and what this motion is, is going to do is put a barrier up in front of Wingates. So Wingates loses whatever parking that barrier blocks. You know, now whether or not San Francisco Kitchen can put tables or chairs there is going to be up to the landlord. Now, you know, you know, I would, I would, you know, rather than hearing, you know, your conversations that, that an alderman has had with, with the landowner about what he will do or won't do, I mean, he's, you know, I mean, no offense, but, but, you know, you're, what you said is he's changed his mind, you know, at least once, maybe twice, maybe three times. So I don't know what the final outcome is going to be. But if we put barriers up in front of his property, it's certainly going to make it easier for him to say to San Francisco Kitchen, well, the space is, is there, you know, you might as well use it. And I think what we're doing is we're picking winners and losers. I would rather.
No comments from the audience, please.
I, I would rather we, I mean, the ordinance does say, you know, there is, you know, there is provision in the ordinance for the mayor, after the parking manager and Department of Public Works and the Infrastructure Committee, the mayor can make adjustments. You know, I would, I would rather, you know, that the landlord and, you know, and Wingates and San Francisco Kitchen, you know, you know, come up with an agreement among the three of them and say, okay, this is, you know, if you do this, this is what we're going to do or it's okay with us for you to do this. Putting barriers, I feel the same way about the barriers in front of Casanova and Gentle Dental. You know, there are, there are barriers that we're going to put in front of those two businesses that are going to, you know, remove that extra parking there. And we're all, and we're doing it because of an email we got from JaJa Bells who does not, you know, there is no parking space in front of JaJa Bells. You know, you know, she, she has no, you know, unless her landlord, the same way, the landlord says, okay, well, the city put barriers there so you can put tables and chairs there because it's not being used for any other purpose. You know, I, I think that I would rather see the landowner and the tenants, you know, resolve this themselves rather than our imposing this on them. You know, as far as the, the narrowing of Main Street, you know, we, you know, we can put a barrier at the beginning of, you know, the corner of Main and Factory on the north and south sides, you know, to reduce the lanes on Main Street. But as far as the, the use of that non-viatic space between the barriers and the sidewalk, you know, I, you know, I, I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think we should be doing that. And so I'm going to vote, you know, against this amendment. Not to mention, you know, you know, we were here till 11 o'clock one night, one o'clock another night working this out. And now, you know, here we are. It's 9:30. I don't know how much longer we're going to be here arguing about this. I would rather we just, you know, adopt what the committee came up with and let the mayor use the power that we've given him in the ordinance to make adjustments.
Mayor, did you want to chime in on that?
Well, just a clarification. I mean, in the task force discussions, the viatic right issue came out and I guess it was first raised by Alderman Cathy. And the legal department looked at that and the landowner, in the case of a non-viatic use, does have the authority to say no. And the idea that we would put out barriers without, you know, without any tables there, we're not going to do that. I mean, we're going to ask for, the procedure I've talked with Director Cummings about is we're going to ask the restaurant to gain the authority of the, it's not the tenant, it's the, it's the owner of the property, gain the, you know, permission or consent of the property owner before we put the barriers up. I mean, we, we cannot put up barriers and have no tables. We're not going to do that. And we can't be put, you know, we have to kind of work all this out before any barriers go up because we can't be, you know, put up some and wait and put up others. I mean, we're going to have to have a complete plan and then go in and put barriers up where we have the plan from the alderman and owner's consent. And where we have both, we'll go forward. If the owner says no, you know, I, I, we not going to risk litigation over this. So, again, we're not going to put up barriers where there's not, where there's not owner's consent.
Alderman Dowd next.
Yes, and I'm going to be brief so we're not hit a little one in the morning. I'm going to support the amendment because I, one of the things going into this whole plan concerned me was trying to be as fair to all individual business owners as possible. And I think we've done that in all the compromises we made, adding parking and taking care of Franklin Street and all these other things. I think what we've done to San Francisco Kitchen is a detriment to a small business trying to get on their feet being new owners. And I, I think that, that we need to support them and just like any other small business downtown. And I feel that I represent not just the people in my ward and many, many people in my ward want the extended outdoor dining that haven't put it on Facebook or emails. They just talk to me. And I feel I also represent the entire city. When I cast the vote, it's for all the taxpayers. It's not segregated into Ward Two. And by the way, Mr. Wingate is a constituent of mine and I am going to vote for the amendment.
Alderman, Alderman Clee.
I thank you again, once again, Madam President. I, I would have loved to have done that conversation over email to all of us at the same time, but because of right to know, that just can't happen. So I had the conversation the way I, I had the conversation with him. I even did a quick little email out to him basically saying, this is what, you know, I'm going to do and so on and so, that he had it in writing exactly. I did CC Alderman Lopez because it is his, his ward on it, but I didn't put any other alderman on simply because it would be, it would be wrong. Again, side conversations have to happen because of right to know. I can't have that conversation with more than a majority on this committee. So that's why those happen. It wasn't trying to be sneaky, trying to do something that would be underhanded or anything of that nature. I did it the way I had to do it legally and so on. Like Alderman Dowd, I have heard from many constituents verbally. They're now getting paranoid to send emails. They don't want to put things on Facebook because of having threatened, they, they feel that their emails are going to be pulled and then it's going to become public knowledge. They don't want to put on Facebook because they're being bullied. And this is real and this is happening. So that's why they give you a call or they stop you in a restaurant, which is what happened with, in one particular case. We have these conversations and don't get me wrong, I have received from my ward constituents such as Mr. Mueller that they are not in favor of this. So I'm not just hearing those are in favor. I think it's pretty even as to who wants it and who doesn't want it. And then there are those who don't speak out. So there are those who don't want it, who don't speak out, they just aren't going to bother. And there are those who do want it and won't, and won't speak out for it. I think this is a good and fair compromise. We had put this through, just having that one little space is all it would do. As the mayor said, once we approve this, if Mr. Harday comes back and says, I absolutely will not give them permission to put the, then there would be no need to put the barriers up. But if he said, if the barriers are there and I will do it and so on. I just believe that putting the handicap spot, keeping the 15-minute parking space helps and it's exactly what he had asked for. I think this is a compromise, 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 and no one gets hurt. And I do want to add to what Alderman Thebold, Thebold said. San Francisco Kitchen got no PPE. They got none of that stuff because they could not prove that they had any revenue because they bought it just as COVID hit. They had no earnings. So therefore, they had no losses as far as the COVID monies and all that was concerned. So the one business, at least one of the businesses downtown, that did not get any of that leg up or a hand up or whatever you want to call it, was San Francisco Kitchen. And I don't think we should continue to hurt them over and over again when we can do this compromise of putting a handicap spot there. We're only taking one extra space from what we just approved. That's it. One space is what's being affected by this. They don't lose a 15-minute parking and they gain a dedicated handicap spot. I think this is a win-win all around. So thank you very much.
Alderman Clemmons.
I'm all set. Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly?
I'll move the amendment.
I'm sorry?
She moved the amendment.
Oh, you moved the question?
Oh, I just said we haven't voted on the amendment. Correct.
Okay.
She's bringing the topic to the original.
Okay.
I'm trying to be in order.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Gosh, this is not an easy topic to, to, to figure out. There's a lot of variables at play, but to make my job more easy, I like to stay in my lane. And as a city, we can only do so much. We're only allowed by law to do so much. And I'm not going to authorize barriers here, barriers there, when I or we haven't heard on the record from a property owner because I think it creates too much confusion. It's just not something that we should be doing. I'd rather have a set plan before we lay down barriers and get permission from the property owner about what we're going to do. I think doing it ahead of time is sort of putting the cart before the horse and it's sort of arbitrary. And so for that reason, just on procedural grounds, I'm just, I'm just not going to support it because I'd rather know for sure what we're doing moving forward. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, move the question.
Motion is to amend.
Move.
Remove the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. So we are considering now Alderman Clee's amendment.
Roll call.
The roll call.
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Clee.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Goveya.
No.
Alderman Cathy.
No.
Alderman Tebold.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Mosher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeas and four nays.
That motion carries and we are now at final passage as amended. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I wanted to start by thanking Alderwoman Clee for bringing forward a compromise. I think that this whole exercise has been, you know, compromise and listening to the downtown. I know that I probably have a unique experience. Most of the people who sit on this board do not go to downtown nine to five, Monday through Friday. And I have really done the homework in terms of talking to the business owners. Every time I walk around to get lunch, we, we have some discussions. I think I've been uncharacteristically quiet on this. I wanted to really listen and, and, and let the committees do their work. I think there's been a lot of pros and cons. I feel both sides of that every day in my, in my work and, and being downtown. But I think that where we have landed is, is, is right for the downtown. I think there's been a lot of deliberation, a lot of public input and that compromise. We really have listened to many of the businesses who had concerns and, and these amendments have addressed as many as we, we really could. Is it perfect? No, but I'm a recovering perfectionist, so I think if you wait for perfect, you're going to get in the way of progress. So I think this is the right way forward for now. And I, I really want to see us as a city continue to look at how this becomes more of a permanent cultural shift for our downtown and what that looks like. So I, I'm looking forward to voting yes on this and I encourage the rest of the aldermen to do so as well.
Motion before us is for final passage as amended. Further discussion? Alderman Goveya.
Thank you, Madam President. This was definitely a lot of spirited debate and discussion between both the task force and members of the community. And we came up with a plan and is it perfect? No. And, you know, at the end of the day, I personally can't support it still due to the fact that we're talking about $115,000 estimated that this will cost and we're not going to recover a dime from it, from any of the businesses that are going to be utilizing it. And I just, I can't get myself to say that's right. We had compromised throughout the program and that was, it was good to see that it could happen. We went through the procedure, but at the end of the day, it just, I can't get myself to go to my ward who most of them are honestly indifferent on the issue and tell them that they're going to have to foot the bill on this as much as everybody else. I just can't find, find it inside me to vote yes for it. And I'm also a lot like Alderwoman Kelly. I'm, I'm downtown five days a week. I work for a downtown business. I'm based right off of, right off of Main Street. And it, it's tough now with parking and you put these barriers in. I don't know what it's going to be like once the barriers go in. So. once the barriers go in. So we'll see. I think it will just be playful as we keep going through. But as of right now, I, I just can't support it at all.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, that threw you to Alderman O'Brien, the king of the house up there evidently. When restaurants and businesses downtown make more money, they pay business profits tax. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And part of the business profits tax comes back to the city. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So they are paying. That's a misnomer that they're paying nothing. The city is getting money back for their expanded business, and that goes for regular stores as well as restaurants. So that is not true. They are paying.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. You know, I think we're at a point now where we're trying to figure out where Nashua's going to go. Someone had mentioned earlier, you know, evolving and changing as a, as a city. I've heard people say that they like being either the gate city or a quainter city. And I think we honestly, we're right in the middle where are we going to go and evolve as a city? Or are we going to go backwards a little bit? And some of us who have been around here a long time know when Main Street was not flourishing and that it took restaurants to bring it back. You know, and Michael Timothy, Michael Buckley of Michael Timothy's has done a lot of helping get that back. Martha's, who's been here way before my time, I believe, you know. I love going down to Main Street, you know, 30 years, took my first drink at Martha's. So it's, it's definitely something that I want to see evolve and grow and change. And the only way to do that is to look forward. And, but you have to, you have to start somewhere. And I think this is the start of seeing if something like this works and to see how we're going to evolve it in the future with a master plan, you know. Main Street Rome wasn't built in a day, and neither is going to be Nashua's Main Street. So, you know, I think we got to keep, keep moving forward. You know, someone spoke about moral courage. I think on both sides, you could say that because I know on either side, we're going to get hit with emails yelling at us for our vote, whether we sided or didn't side with it. So I don't blame anybody for voting on either side because they're going to get the same pressure that I'm going to get from people out there too, because not 100% of my constituents are for or against barriers, right? And, you know, speaking of moral courage, my mother is against this 100%. And she would kill me for my vote as a Nashua citizen that she is. I hope she's in bed and she's not watching this because I will get a call. There will probably be about 60 minutes tomorrow yelling at me for my vote. But I am going to support this. Thank you.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. With all due respect to my colleague in Ward Two, yeah, you're, sure, you might get more tax, but there's nothing to prove that we're gaining more money from that, from that tax that would be there if the barriers weren't there. Would people still be coming downtown to eat? Yeah, I think so. I do. I don't feel people are coming just downtown to eat and expanded dining. Parts okay, but full is better. And when you can pay off something in full and it doesn't affect the taxpayer, I think that's better. We're in year three now. We've, we're now, we're now in year three going to start talking about what a fee is going to look like for this project when really it should have been looked at last year. Or I'll give a break on the first year because that was real COVID innovation. I think it was a great idea in a time where restaurants weren't at full capacity. This was, it was absolutely brilliant to come up with something like this to make sure it could still happen. But we're now in year three and I think we need a fee scale. I think it's, it's long overdue before I can still support this. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
I want to request a roll call and make a quick comment. As this goes, I think it, a lot of the pressure really speaks to how downtown is used. There's this four lanes bad, two lanes, or four lanes good, two lanes bad mentality. I think I'm misquoting Animal Farm. But we do have to look at pedestrian use in downtown as a factor. It was commented multiple times by members of the public, like, I don't even know why we have the midpoint crossings. Like those, those can go away. And I mean, when you have four lanes, you really need the midpoint crossing if you are the pedestrian. And we've had a number of pedestrians that have been injured or hurt. And we've even had a couple of car accidents that have been trying to avoid people over the years. That, I think the midpoint crossings have done a lot to mitigate. The fire department has a little, little famously said they prefer to not have them there in case they needed to, to pass through that section. But the fire department will also respond in an extremely timely manner on Ash Street, for example, which is a one-way street. And does remarkable response times throughout most of the downtown area. So I think it is important to consider that, yes, outdoor dining is the current use that's being looked at. But our city's master planning and our overall plans for how downtown is going to be used does need to adjust for the fact that people and cars shouldn't be in the same place unless they're in the cars. And when you have outdoor dining, the barriers that are keeping the cars from encroaching on the diners are an obvious and important safety concern when you look at the national trend of the last couple of years of cars driving through crowds. That's an unfortunate reality, and that's why the traffic department insists on those barriers. But they also reflect how people use Main Street because they are referred to as barriers mostly by people who are driving through and see the outside of them. They're referred to as extended outdoor dining by people who are inside the barriers, enjoying shows, getting to see each other, listening to music, all that kind of stuff. So I would encourage people in Nashua on either side of the issue to use the outdoor dining if it is approved tonight, period. Because if it is an amenity that is going to be there, it's also a different way to experience downtown. It's also a different way to use the spaces that we have. And as the owner of SFK commented in her own comment, they're welcoming. The restaurants want to have you there. They want to see you. And they're an opportunity for you to see others too. That's, I think, ultimately what we need to decide in terms of downtown, whether we're using it to travel or whether we're using it as a destination. Thank you.
Alderman Camo.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. It will probably not come as a surprise to anyone in this room, but I cannot support this legislation for a number of reasons. First and foremost, we use the word compromise a lot. And, you know, based on the definition, I suppose this is a compromise. But I look at the work that the task force did, you know, over the course of probably over 20 hours when you add it all up and then you multiply that by the number of people involved, and that's a lot of man-hours. And the end result of that now with this amendment is basically that we picked a paint color. So that's, that's the result of all of that work. I'm reminded of, I joke with my kids, you know, they, they said they wanted a cat and I said, no. So we compromised and the cat's name's Gizmo. You know, there's people that wanted to come up with a plan that involved four lanes of travel. The city wanted two lanes of travel, so we compromised and got two lanes of travel. There were people that wanted no barriers. The city wanted 100% barriers, so we compromised and got 95% barriers. There was a growing contingent of people that wanted the window shrunk to Memorial Day to Labor Day. The city wanted the first of May to the middle of October, so we compromised and cut two weeks off of the end. So it was, you know, 5% decrease or something like that. So yeah, this is a compromise, but it's not much of a compromise. There's more we could have done. You know, it was suggested that businesses should be able to pay for the space. Some other people said that they shouldn't, so we compromised and they're paying nothing. So it hardly seems like much of a compromise at all. So for those reasons, I, I can't support this unless more significant changes are made to it.
Alderman Dowd. Did you have your hand up? No? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to go backwards from the last speaker to, I, I think that was disingenuous. And I know you meant to do joke, Alderman Camo, that only the paint color was picked. You can look right at what Director Cummings has said. The, yes, I, through my amendment, I did undo that particular barrier of the, of the 20 feet, but I did add the handicap parking space. The, they added two spaces back to 100 Main Street. They removed the barriers at 105 West Pearl Street. They removed the, the variable message board sign, and I believe that was a very long conversation, as well as removing the orange barrels everywhere using the alternate channelizing devices as needed. And yes, paint the barrier red brick color and install reflective white tape everywhere. So I, I think to say that all that work because of one thing that was taken out was reduced onto that was very unkind for a committee that you were on as well as others. I'd also like to say that I absolutely 100% agree with Alderman Govee that we should have done this earlier. And at this point, we should be doing that. And the truth is, it is, was the sitting board of Alderman's fault for putting it off and for saying, let's look at it more. And we literally kicked the can down the road. So you are absolutely right. We should have. We didn't. And now we are where we are here. So to your point, I absolutely agree with it. As far as will, where people come, I can tell you that I have a colleague up in the State House whose daughter goes to Revere College. They go to, she, she's an athlete there and they come to games. And he called me one day and said to me, oh my God, I love your extended downtown dining. He was at Martha's. They were sitting in the street. And he lives in Hampton. And he's a state rep and a selectman there. And he was just blown away by it. He's told four of his friends who have now come to Nashua. So it's, I don't believe build it and they will come, but word of mouth will spread. If you're in this area, you got to check it out. So I do think it will bring more attention to Nashua. God knows, we're getting a lot of attention on the negative side, probably from all this going back and forth and so on. So I, I do think that is, is the case. And I'm proud of our downtown. And I've been here now for 37 years, I think. And I too have seen a lot of changes just in that 37 years, long before you were born. And I still think you're just graduating from high school, but anyways, we'll put that aside. But the, the thing is, I have seen a lot of changes. And I do believe that when Michael Buckley and when Martha's became alive and Fodys went all the way to the other end, we had restaurants coming in and out and so on. When Villa Bunka left in the middle of the night and Fratello's came in and saved us for that, they did that because they knew it was a vibrant kind of building. I know Fratello's had made some rather unkind comments on their way out, but the truth is, a restaurant that's there now, I think, Belisimo, wouldn't have come if they felt that Nashua didn't have something to offer. So I do think it's not a build it and they will come, but I do think there will be word of mouth. And I do think this is a positive step forward. And I think there has been a lot of compromise. And I think we continue to do compromise. So thank you for letting me talk.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things. So I wholeheartedly believe that fees need to be charged. And I think it was a risk benefit of the fact that it's going to be so short to implementation that we couldn't get enough restaurants on board for what the fee would be. We'd need the city to develop a fee schedule, et cetera. We'd need to come back to the board. And we'd just delay it further. So it was a risk benefit on why we took that action. I'll tell you, I'll be the first Alderman that submits an ordinance to rescind this if we don't have fees in place by the next year or two, because I do believe we need to pay for that extra space. I do think it's a bit disingenuous to, to say that we should have took an action further, quicker. I mean, I think this, the executive branch got a good taste that this board is different than the previous boards and that we have a lot of differing opinions. And that gives each and single Alderman a chance to insert their opinion whether they support this or not. No matter who votes on this at the end, it's, everyone had a piece to suggest on this compromise plan. There, there was information taken in to make this plan palatable to a wider population. So I, I think that we should have our ability to do our job despite, you know, the previous board kicking the can to this board. So thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
Can I move the question?
You can. The motion is to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. The motion before us is for final passage as amended. And a roll call has been requested. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
No.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Camo.
No.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
No.
Alderman Cathy.
No.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Mousher.
Yes.
You have 11 yeas and four nays.
That motion carries. And Resolution 2222 is declared duly adopted as amended. New business resolutions.
First reading of Resolution R2223 relative to the adoption of the Nashua Arts and Cultural Plan.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll, excuse me.
Sorry, I, I don't mean to interrupt you, but the agenda appears to be incorrect because the outdoor dining ordinance 22008, it's labeled as Resolution 2202, which you just verbalized. I just want to make sure that's correct for the, for the record.
Thank you for calling, for pointing that out. Where were we? Additional sponsors. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the National Planning Board.
First reading of Resolution R2224 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Police Commissioners and the Nashua Police Patrolmen's Association from July 1st of 2022 through June 30th of 2026.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Clemmons, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Camo, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow, and myself. Would you please, if you have a conversation, take it out of the chamber, please? Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R2225 authorizing the mayor to apply for and expend the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for fiscal year 2023.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, and Alderman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R2226 authorizing first amendments to developer agreements for Bronstein redevelopment.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Tebow, Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O2211 amending the zoning map by rezoning land situated north and south on Lake Street and west on Pine Street from local business LB to local business with mixed use overlay district, LBMU.
Additional sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Sullivan, Alderman Moran, Alderman Clemmons, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cathy. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, National Planning Board, and schedule a public hearing for the May 17th, 2022 Planning and Economic Development Committee. Period for general public comment. First signed up is Karen Bill.
Karen Bill, 95 Parnell Place. I think you've done a great disservice to the residents of Nashua. I agree with the Alderman that said during the pandemic was one thing. Last year, I'm sure somebody probably thought that at some point in time, the pandemic would be done. And there should have been forethought in this governing body about discussions about where Nashua should go. There's a, there's a whole great article, again, on, oh, what's the word? Their Bollards, B-O-L-L-A-R-D-S, that Cincinnati took down their Their Bollards, B-O-L-L-A-R-D-S, that Cincinnati took down their barriers and went with these Bollards. And because barriers are so ugly. So you can look it up. If you Google it, it'll come up. To have only fox in your hen house, nobody outside of Main Street. Michael Timothy's Lori Orlano brought you numbers. Surf, $750,000. Show me how much more they paid in business tax, please, Alderman Dowd, honestly. Martha's, over half a million. MT's, 666,000. We, the residents and taxpayers and renters, because rents go up when taxes go up, we have paid for that. We. Would you do it on Daniel Webster Highway? You're probably thinking, "Oh, my God, what crazy person would think that?" Think about it. Safety. Somebody living in Mary's house, excuse me while I'm speaking now, you seem to point it out. You point it out when other people do it. Somebody living in Mary's house on the third floor doesn't have the same rights as somebody sitting in a restaurant. Because when the ambulance is a minute later and they're dead, or two minutes later and the stroke is permanent, yeah, let's have those conversations at that point. $617 last year for one barrier. Okay? The cost went up last year, that was two years ago. 688 last year for one barrier. These restaurants should have had a plan for this year if you were going to do any barriers. And you, who have voted for this, have done a great disservice to the residents of Nashua. And I've been here for almost every single hour...
Your time is up.
...of these meetings as well.
I'll just reiterate my point.
Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Craig Hermway, 12 Brittany Way, Nashua.
Thank you.
I'm not against outdoor dining. However, if a landlord or if a tenant said, "I want an additional 500 square feet and didn't want to pay for it," I don't think that would happen. And that's exactly what is happening in downtown Nashua right now. Power to be, or my hat's off to everybody that's making it work, but I don't get anything for nothing. And I don't think anybody should be allowed it. And just because you're paying additional taxes for something you sell isn't paying for the landscape that you're, or the square footage that you're utilizing. A good compromise, in my opinion, would be to allow the dining on the sidewalks only this year. You've had three years to figure out how much businesses should be paying. The compromise should be we'll allow sidewalk-dining and we'll explore the expanded dining once we agree to price upfront. To allow businesses to flourish without having to pay for it at my expense, at the taxpayer's expense, it sounds great, but there's been a heck of a lot more than just barrier removal that's been involved in this process. I don't know how much your consultant cost that did us two, two-day data points on parking utilization, but that was a farce. How much did that cost? And the line items go on and on. Do it, but please do it properly. And this is being rushed through, and it shouldn't be. Thank you.
That's all I have for public comment. Remarks by members... You need to sign up when you come in for a meeting?
Oh, sorry, I was late. Elizabeth, 17 Robey Street. Just two things. After the passage of this barrier decision, I wondered whether, is there anything to stop a property owner whose tenants on, whose tenants are not restaurateurs or bar owners? Is there any way to stop them from renting the space in front of them to the highest bidder? And I, if that were possible, that does not, you know, seem like a good, seems like something we should have thought of. And also, the difficulty in deciding how much to charge, it was a lot to figure out working through that compromise. I don't understand why the charge is difficult. If it would help, I mean, you could go with what income was derived from those parking spaces the year, the last year though they were available, and price it at that price. So that the people who are using those parking spaces are bringing in the same income that the parking space would. Was that considered? Does that, I mean, that seems like a pretty simple concept. So, thank you.
Matthew Guthro?
Thank you. I wanted, this is Matthew Guthro, 104 Conley. I wanted to use my time for this public comment to express my concerns over the joint task force meetings on the proposed outdoor dining and how they were operated. The attitude displayed by our elected officials of "we know better than the taxpayers" were never more discouraging than having a sitting Alderman comment during the meeting that those who are opposed to outdoor dining were not concerned about public safety in our historic downtown district. But these were the same malcontents that oppose the mask mandate, and their concern should be dismissed. Is this how our elected officials welcome civic engagement by our residents? Additionally, I need to express a concern where the chair's actions made it appear as if his job as a state official was more important than the role allowing public comment during the meeting, as he openly campaigned in the meeting for a motion to adjourn because he needed to be at the State House in the morning. This essentially silenced those residents who waited hours during the meeting to speak. This selfish display was absolutely repugnant. The chair chastised several members of the public during the meeting, telling them that their comments needed to be reserved for the general comments portion of the meeting. I'm sure that the people who waited patiently for hours to speak had jobs and other important things to attend to the next day. And it was disappointing to hear that there wasn't time as the chair prioritized his need to be in Concord the next morning. I know this statement may not make me popular, but it needs to be said. If you feel your role as a state official is more important and you have no time for public input, or you can't balance the responsibilities of the state of New Hampshire with the oath that you took as an Alderman of the City of New Hampshire in Nashua, New Hampshire, you should resign. Plain and simple. Madam Chair, I must say that I am proud of the professionalism displayed by those citizens who participated in this joint committee. For the actions of some of our elected officials during this joint task force meeting in which you had the opportunity to witness, I can't help but feel that a refresher on ethics and empathy is surely needed for some members of this dais. Thank you for your consideration of these concerns.
Thank you. Remarks by members of the board?
After that, I got nothing.
Okay. Sounds good. Alderman Cleese?
Thank you. I want to express my thankfulness to this board and to the members of the public who both came out and spoke as well as who sat on the task force. Everybody gave it their all. There were some that were more than polite and some less, but putting all that aside, I think in the end, everybody got to have their, their voice heard and so on. But one of the things that one of the meetings where someone turned around and said, "When are we bringing the parades back? You know, we need to have the parades." We did have a parade. And many of the Alderman-elect walked in that parade after the election. The parades are coming back. We are going to have our outdoor events and so on, and they have come back. So I just wanted to clarify that and make sure that that had been addressed. It was a long evening, and I didn't address it then. And Madam President, I'd like to send my condolences to my members up in the State House and to the family of Representative Kathy Rogers, who lost her battle. She was an amazing woman. Before I got elected, I met Representative Rogers, and she is a force of nature. When you talked to Kathy, and she would find out where your passions were. She found out that I loved Greyhounds. And the next thing I knew, I had animal advocates knocking on my door, asking me to help sponsor. I had never talked to them. I had never made that out loud. And they dropped the name of Representative Rogers. When Representative Rogers found out that my husband's sister had been murdered cold blood in Public Street of Boston, in front of her peers, in front of the nursing school at the age of 18, and that he had tried to get into a VA hospital for mental health issues. The next knock on my door was from, was from mental health advocates as well as those that wanted a little bit more gun control. Kathy had a way of getting things out of you and so on. Saying no to Kathy was very, very difficult, very difficult. She did not take no from the answer. And the one thing that amazed me more than Kathy is she worked both sides of the aisle. She didn't care what your party was. She would work both sides of the aisle. To her family and to my colleagues, she's going to be missed. And, and I, I don't know, President Wiltshire, if you served with her up there, but it's like she's been there for a very long time. And she served from DC to Concord and every place in between. So, thank you.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to wish all those who celebrate it, Happy Easter this weekend and Happy Passover. Lucky it coincides. So I just wanted to wish all my fellow Christians a Happy Easter and my brothers and sisters who are Jewish a Happy Passover. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I wanted to thank Director Photo and Public Works. I noticed last week that they were doing a great job cleaning up the rail trail, getting on the underbrush figured out. They did some soil landscaping. At some point during the winter, somebody put a glass table out across from St. Louis so people could put things on it, I guess, or store it or whatever. Said glass table was broken at some point today. And she had a DPW crew over there to clean it up within like an hour because I was obviously concerned that rail trail, being so popularly used, is also used by a lot of kids and a lot of mothers with strollers and a lot of people walking their dogs. So I appreciate her timeliness. I appreciate, in general, DPW's patience in that area. The garbage is filled up. There's multiple volunteer groups that do brush cleanings and all that kind of stuff. And they're always there to lend a hand and be very supportive. And I just wanted to express that appreciation. Thank you.
President Wiltshire, you did not see this gentleman...
Don't, don't, do not speak out in this meeting. I will ask you to be removed from the meeting if you continue. There's a process here.
You just didn't see him when he put his hand up. This gentleman...
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President.
I wasn't humiliating anyone, so why don't you please be quiet back there or leave? That's a good idea. Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you, Madam President. I will make this very brief. I just wanted to wish everybody a Happy Easter and Happy Passover. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
I'd like to be brief as well, but I wanted to extend my condolences to Alderwoman Clemmons and welcome them back. I'm sorry for the loss of your father-in-law.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to thank Doria Brown and the Energy and Environment Committee for the event that we had before this long meeting. This seems like it was so many hours ago, but it was a great update on what we've been doing. And we anticipate coming to the board with some new recommendations and goals in the coming years, so.
Alderman Camo?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of really quick things, like Alderman Moran, I'd like to wish a Happy Easter and Passover to whoever celebrates either of those. I'd like to encourage any citizens in Ward 6 who live in the neighborhoods around Pine Street and Lake Street, if they so wish, to attend the Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting on May 17th for the public hearing around the rezoning of the vacant lot across from the Lake Street garage. Additionally, although New Searls is not in my ward, for those who might know Shay Patno was a student at Nashua South, he tragically lost his life in 2020. He was a football player, among other things, a great teammate of my, you know, of my son and a lot of other kids on the football team. On May 14th, the New Searls PTO is doing a color run to raise funds to install a memorial bench in Shay's honor. There's a link, if you're interested in signing up. It is incredibly long and complicated, and I'm not going to try to say it right now, but I will share it to my Facebook page and my website. If anyone's interested in participating in that color run to raise funds for that, I think it's a great cause. And then the last thing I wanted to mention, not that I want to wade into the toxic waters of Facebook, but there was some comments that were made to me that suggested that I have no right to have an opinion on the downtown barrier situation because they don't exist in Ward 6 and because I'm a renter and not a homeowner in the city of Nashua. So I would just hopefully like to clear that point up and say that whether you own a home or rent a home in the city of Nashua, you have the right to participate in the city process. Happily, I believe it was 1792 that the state of New Hampshire eliminated property ownership as a requirement for participation in the civic process. And luckily for that, you all get to hear me talk once, or twice a month or so. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes, I'd also like to wish Happy Easter, Happy Passover to all the residents of Nashua. And I would like to also send my condolences to the Clemmons family for their loss. It's very tough losing a family member. And the other thing I've heard often, that people say, "I've lived in Nashua so many years." Well, I've lived in Nashua 76 years, and I have 43 years of city service. So I think my service probably predates a lot of people when they were in school. So, just I would...
Alderman Goveya?
Thank you, Madam President. Happy Easter and Passover to all those who celebrate. And just thank you for everybody who came out during this process of expanded downtown dining. It's, I feel like as a freshman Alderman, we've really gone through the wringer on this one nice and early. So it was great to be part of the process. And thank you to everybody who came out and spent a lot of time with us here in the chamber.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few things. I'd like to extend my condolences to Alderman Clemmons. And I deeply know what that feels like. I'd like to congra, give congratulations to Tim Senet. He's actually in my ward. He's very active, cares about the city a lot, and I think he'll be a great asset to the committee. Also, congratulations to Mr. Ballinger, Mr. Leclerc. I serve on the planning board with them. They're both outstanding members, really care about how the city's moving forward when it comes to planning. Also, congratulations to Captain Fay. I've had many conversations with him. I think he'll be a great asset. I'd also like to extend my thanks to DPW. I've emailed them several times this week alone, just asking for cleanups from certain citizens. And they are very quick on the draw, and they are happy to help, no complaints, and they usually take care of it within a day or so. So I appreciate their hard work. I was going to wade into the barrier thing. I'm not going to. I will say this. There's a bust on Main Street of Lawrence Elliott. He also has a field named after him, Bishop Gorden. His son, who is my ex-father-in-law, died today of heart attack. And I don't like crying. I had a prophecy that I wouldn't, but I lost. But the reason I'm bringing this up is, he served our church for 50 years, and that meant a lot to me because now I'm a public servant. And I just wanted to have his name on the record to honor him. I'm sorry. I'm done.
Alderman Tebow?
Thank you, Madam President. So, you know, I definitely want to give my condolences to Alderman Cathy, you know, and Alderman Clemmons and his wife, Ashley. I know it's, it's tough to go through that. I've definitely gone through it myself, and we all will at some point. So it's tough, and thank you for both being here. You know, Happy Pass... You know, Happy Passover, Happy Easter to, to everyone that, of the fates that, that follow. I too know the Patno family. I coached Shay for, for many, many years since he was a little kid and even his brother Cole, who is younger. So that was a tragic accident that, that he had gone through. So for the color run, please, please, please support that. Just a couple of things I wanted to address outside of those things because obviously I, I just got attacked already in the public comment. I just want to say go back and look at the meetings. I never called anybody malcontents. You can twist it into a way that makes it seem like I did, but I didn't call anybody malcontents. Both sides have people that are passionate about how they feel about these things. And, you know, someone's going to be on one side of the vote one week and someone's going to be on the other side of the vote other weeks. Doesn't mean I dislike people or don't like those people. It's, it's, it's just sometimes, you know, in the passion of things, we get a little too excited about our passion for whatever we're talking about. You know, when I talked about police and fire, it was that I believe they will, and I use the words figure it out, because I believe in them. I think they are, they know what they're doing more than I do. The police were here today. They didn't come up and, and grab the mic and say, hey, this is, it's going to be dangerous. I believe that they can, they can cover this, this area. I really do. And other people have talked to it tonight. You know, to the compromise, it was a compromise. In December, this plan came before, the board before us, by the way, so half of us are brand new. So there was no fourth thought from half of us, right? Because we didn't even know we were going to be here until November. In December, the mayor put the barriers forth, full barriers, just like the last couple of years. This plan that we have now that passed tonight is completely different than that full, full plan. So I do think there was compromise and change. I'll tell you, Pedler's daughters, daughter will tell you there was a compromise because they lost space to help us get through that traffic. And so I don't believe in, in, in what, you know, Alderman Kamal said about the 98%. I, I think, I, I just don't. I don't agree with that. So I, we do listen to the public. I think we all do. I think we listen. I know, and a bunch of you have said this, we read the emails that attack us, we read the emails that support us. I've gotten tons of both. So I do listen and, you know, I listen to somebody in my ward Gloria, Gloria from Glorious Possibilities. I put the motion forward to give her two spots back, even though I support the barriers because she's in my ward and I listen to her. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Alderman Tivell?
Thank you. I was pretty quiet today because I'm going through some things myself and condolences to Alderman Clemmons and Kathy. I left my granddaughter at somebody else's house because I'm waiting for this meeting and she keep texting me. So you could look at my texts, it's all from her saying, I'm tired. She's been in hospital, she's been in hospital for almost eight days now and she came out just before I came here. So I have to go and get her and bring her home so she can be, so she can rest. And I understand, we all been through this and I've been reading things in the hospitals and a lot of times at the hospital with her. She lives with me. So, and she have everything, some of you guys already know, but that's why I'm quiet. But I do read all my emails and I do listen to everyone and anyone that calls me, I do listen to them as well. So that's all I have to say. Oh, one other thing. I might not be able to make this one, is to help the department meet tomorrow at 11:30.
I want to give my condolences to you, Alderman Cathy, for your loss. And Alderman Clemmons, for yours. I, I do want to ask the gentleman who got up to speak if he would still like to speak, but there is a process here that we go by?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
I'll be very, very brief.
Okay. Thank you.
There is a saying.
You need, you name and address every time you come up, please.
Pardon?
Your name and address, please.
Albert Mueller in 11 Bates Drive.
Thank you.
There is a saying in New England that I learned and it says, if you can't broke, don't fix it. And I think this assembly is making a federal case out of nothing because the solution, solution is very, very simple. Go back to the way it was before the pandemic. And that's why this assembly could not come to a solution with a compromise. Because out of nothing, a big problem was made. My suggestion is go back to the pre, pre problem we have, the pandemic. And that's, I wish everybody a Happy Easter.
Thank you. Committee announcements. Alderman Lopez?
Human Affairs Committee is going to be Monday, April 18th. And the CDBG for incoming aldermen, Community Development Building Grant or Block Grant. It's, it's, it's grant money that comes through the city, but also is very important to nonprofit organizations that rely on it for things like incidental repairs, windows, handicapped accessible bathrooms. I, I could go on. But they're going to do presentations and they're going to talk about what their needs are. I would definitely recommend coming because it's very educational about all the things that are happening in the city. Thank you.
Alderman Clay?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to announce that the Penachuck Water Special Committee will be meeting on Thursday. Thursday, yes. Thursday, the 14th at 7:00 PM. I know there was some confusion the last time, but we have to vote in a clerk and if you're not there, I'm going to vote you in. So thank you so much.
Other committee announcements? Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, it is a little ahead, but the Joint Special School Building Committee on the 21st, Thursday, at Nashua High North is going to be at 8:00 PM. So we can be sure we have a quorum. We have some bills to be paid. So you know that the, at school vacation at the Penachuck, the, the last portable is coming down and construction will start on the library IT wing. Also, after the April vacation, the south addition is going to be turned over to the school. And the people that used to be in the portable now are going to be in the south wing. That's coming along really well. And also the new school, it's, it's like an army of ants, you wouldn't believe it, that they, they are going great guns down there. They've got tons of very heavy equipment and they're moving lots of material in and out. And they expect to be pouring the foundation next week.
Other committee announcements? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion that the April 12, 2022 meeting in the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 10:28 PM. Thank you, everyone.